If Brother Roland and the CDC ain't there, or Play It Tea ain't there, you got Kevin here. You know, he here. And he been here for quite some time. What's up, Kev?
What's happening, man? How you feel?
Man, I feel excellent. And again, I thank you for coming on, man. You know, it was kinda, you know, I put something up on the web. I gotta be honest, I seen some unusual activity on Superior. I seen University Circle Police had somebody pulled over, giving them the business on Superior, right? Across, when we was doing a fundraiser, you know, raising funds for the, you know, the CDC and to do good things in the community. And, you know, we was kinda perturbed by it. And I put it out there, and I had to put Kevin in because I didn't want to talk behind his back. And he came down, he called us up. Hey, man, we need to come talk about this, so I appreciate it.
That was out of respect for you.
No, I appreciate that, man.
Out of respect, out of respect.
Appreciate that. Well, you know, to get off right off to the back, you know, first of all, before we even get to that, man, I heard you just won an award for arts.
Yeah, it's my third national award on city council. Lot of council people, you know, when you write policy and it was down, they flew me and my family to Tampa Bay and gave me a national award. You did some studying on that. And when you win national awards, that set models up and your stuff is duplicated throughout the country. And it's a blessing, that's a blessing. And I feel real good about that one.
Would you like to reveal exactly what it was that you got recognized for?
Well, I started a lot of arts programs. One of the programs I legislated was a $3 million program to start art programs throughout the city of Cleveland. Not only in Ward 9. Because when you're a councilman, you write policy for people to live, work, and travel through the city of Cleveland. So, um, out of the $3 million, $700,000 went toward 5, over there with Councilmember Richard Starr is at, and they're building. Matter of fact, they had an event earlier today with some arts. And they had children, teaching them about arts and doing murals in the Ward 5 community about the history, do murals. Uh, we sent money over to Ward 14, where Councilwoman Santana is at, to do art programs. And then we started Arts District. Not only did I legislate that, um, I have a program called Play It Forward Cleveland.
Play Play It Forward Cleveland?
Play It Forward Cleveland.
Play It Forward?
Yeah, that's a good program. Um, we collect musical instruments, new, used, gently-used instruments for children. And we rehab the instruments, like trumpets and guitars and drum sets. You just can't have Kevin Conwell playing the drums. You want to give it back to the kids. You want to give it back to the kids. Because that's what God told me to do. So, we collect, we, CMSD works with me on it. Um, Music School Settlement, Arts Inspired Learning, Julio de Burgos. And we collect over $100,000 worth of instruments a year. And we give the instruments to the children. And I have another program to go with that. And I legislate a quarter of a million dollars uh, every summer to set all the children who want to go and take free music lessons in the city of Cleveland, they can take music lessons.
Why, why did you feel it was so important to champion the arts like that to where you got recognized for?
Well, you know, it benefited me also, but I was sick with cancer, number one. Uh, other people were going through chemotherapy, staring at the wall. But I was sitting back just practicing. Shakataka takka.
Is that right?
Shakataka takka. I was practicing, you know, on my, on my drums while I'm at University Hospital. A lot of chemo was coming up in me and everything. And, um, then I felt this way, God hit this with me. I'm proud of you, because you know, I have a band also that plays for free throughout the whole county. So that if you dealing ovarian cancer, breast cancer, whatever, instead of paying us, the money goes back into the mission. Dealing with breast cancer, ovarian cancer, whatever, giving back. So God said, I'm not pleased with you doing that. You have clouded influence that you can help out better to help the children out. See, the children have to see success every single day.
Yeah, I agree with that.
With that clouded influence, you send them to music school. You, um, um, you raise them instruments because people have stopped playing instruments to give it to the children. And it's just like sports. It keep kids off of the streets. And it teach them self-esteem, character, and all those kind of good things also. Because when I was growing up, you, um, you had children going to and from school carrying their trumpets or violins, whatever the case may be. And they would practice, and they weren't just out here in the streets. So you gotta do sports, but you also can do music. And it teaches good character. And that's what God told me to do. So it wasn't my idea, God told me to do that. So now other cities are doing it also. Play It Forward this, and Play It Forward Tampa, Play It Forward collecting musical instruments and donating it to children.
Oh, that's, that's amazing, right there.
It's cool beans, man.
What did Severance and all those good folks had to say about that?
Well, Severance helped out because, you know, you don't do it alone, you have a project team. And so Severance and CMSD help us to collect the instruments also. And, uh, Music School Settlement, they help us to collect the instruments to give them to the children. And so, um, some of our, our children in the summertime go to Arts Inspired Learning on Magnolia Drive. And some of the kids go to, uh, the Music School Settlement, taking free music lessons. And what I'm proud about that program, the instruments cost so much money that we, um, and the parents can't afford it. But we have the instruments for our children, for our babies. And we give it to them. And they, they, um, they smile and they're very, very happy.
Have you had any of them play with your band yet?
This summer they will, we play, um, we play outside. Matter of fact, I'm gonna play with some kids with some steel drums. I'm gonna put together a youth steel drum. You mentioned Africa. But, uh, when they went through the Middle Passage, they stopped in places like Trinidad. And they created the steel drums because Europeans took the drums away from our people, your people, our people. And then they started doing steel drums in places like Trinidad. So we have ordered some steel drums. And we're gonna teach children steel drums and their African history. And then we'll go all around playing music. And I'm gonna play with them playing steel drums, as well as drum set and marimbas and things like that.
Now, you recently opened up a vill, uh, building down on 105. Is Glen Village?
Glen Village.
Glen Village. Now, what does that have to do with anything with the arts? And what is the purpose of that facility?
Well, Glen Village is kinda doing like the Renaissance, um, the CDC part. Um, the guy that owns, the guy that we have in, on CLE, we gave him the keys to the building. So that he's gonna bring in some businesses there. And the businesses that's in there, we mainly pay for the electricity and the gas. And we charge them a minimum amount of rent. Okay, so we're gonna relaunch it again in June. But that's a business incubator. So we developed the businesses so our people can do for themselves. And they can start their own businesses. And then we put them out in the community. And when they come out and, when they go out into the community, then they can hire people from the community. Um, not just in Glenville, but all over the city of Cleveland. And it's mainly African-American businesses that we start there. And that's what that building, it's a business incubator at the bottom.
Business incubator.
But the top part, which is 90%, uh, filled with occupancy all the time, they pay for downstairs. You see what I'm saying? They pay for the rent. So downstairs, we don't, you got some people in there paying $300 for rent or $500 for rent. And then the money they make, they use it to develop. So when they leave, that's why you see it empty there. Some people don't know, they'll say, well, it's empty, it's empty. No, they're transferring out to other businesses to start. Like Mary, that was there. Mary left, she had a coffee shop. And now she's right next to Aldi on, um, Euclid. And she started her own coffee shop. But we cultivated her there in the, in the business. The other lady that had the fish shop, Sharply, she left, and now she's in Myers Business, other places like that, selling her tea. So you gotta have a place to cultivate businesses so that our people can go out and do for self.
Who came up with that idea? You spearheaded that, or?
Well, you know what, I was told that a while ago, and I always remember, and I was from Caldwell, that, um, what's that young lady's first name? Francis Caldwell was telling me.
Oh, yeah, I know Francis.
Yeah, I was getting people jobs back then, Roland. I was the jobs man, going, starting job fairs and getting people jobs. So Francis said, they gonna mistreat our people, Kevin. She told me that way back. And I said, so what you think? She said, why don't you start business incubators and cultivate our people to start having their own businesses to do for self? I said, that's a good idea. So the city, it's a city private, it's a private and public-owned building.
Okay, so it's a joint venture between the public sector and the private sector?
And the private sector. So we have, the city had the one that you see where, uh, the barber shop, we're gonna bring back the barber shop in that area, and CLE and all that right there. So we have that.
You told me earlier on, candidly too, you were thinking about having like a musical apparatus in there.
I got a studio in there, I got a musical studio in there.
You got a musical studio in there right now?
Yeah, it's in there.
So people can go in there and record and things like that?
No, I just practice. They do, they practice in there with the music. Um, I just don't have that kind of time for the studio right now. Because you know, the wife and I just developed Hitchcock Center for Women and Children. Because you know, Yvonne, my wife who county council, who you guys helped to put in office, she got tired of seeing women out here in the streets. So we raised, we went down to see the governor and Mayor Frank Jackson and the county. And we lobbied at the Congress. And we, um, now we have Hitchcock Center for Women and Children. It's a $27 million building that's in the community. And it used to be Hitchcock Center for Women, but we added the children in there. You know, I always add children in there. And the children would go to Wilson School across the street while their mothers was working for individual service plan on how to get them back on track, teaching them jobs, entrepreneurship, getting them on track. But their children would go to the schools across the street. So it's Women, Infant, and Children Hitchcock Center. It's a beautiful, beautiful place. The ribbon cutting will come, I think we looking some time in September. $27 million building.
Wow.
So you got, the building you mentioned, $15 million. I'm happy about Hitchcock Center for Women and Children, $27 million. Fisher House across the street from it, you lobby for that with the VA, that's $15 million building. Then we bought University Hospital into the community to fight against healthcare inequality. That's a $17 million building on Churchill. And then we also brought in, uh, Serge J. Harper site that was next, is right next to it. All-females thing on Lee, Lee, um, Lee Road. And that's connected to the Fisher House. That's 2.2, I think it's 2.5 million, something like that. So I've been busy doing economic development, which you told me to do a while back when I got in office.
Well, and, and speaking of that, I remember you speaking down in the Foreman Mills parking lot, with depression and everybody. And you was talking about how challenging it was to bring economic development to this ward with the crime and the thievery in the places once they are opened up here. You know, have you, uh, have you seen any change in that? Have you got any feedback from people like Rick Foreman? You know, telling you, telling you the efforts are working? Or are they looking up for business development?
Well, you know what, you told me to bring in, because when I got in, we had Tops down there. And you told me to bring in a store. And, uh, the wife and I, Yvonne, we went to Detroit. And we brought Foreman Mills back here, when you mentioned Foreman Mills. And we wanted to connect Dave's next to it. But Dave didn't want to come in because he said it was too much shrinkage in the neighborhood, shrinking. Shrinkage meaning theft. That's what he said, that's what he said. And so.
Shrinkage?
Shrinkage. Yeah, it is, it means theft.
Like when they stole your dog, Bud? When they stole your dog?
Yeah, man, that's what it means. So. We lost, not we though, but. Man, that store.
And I was where the people that supposed to have, you know, have what they supposed to have. You know, and where the people in my hood looked and went to another hood, unknown hood.
Shrinkage.
You know, shrinkage, that's a shrinkage.
Shrinkage, yeah, right, eh? People walk in and just take stuff and leave. Shrinkage at Advance Auto. When we opened up Advance Auto, um, we had employees inside Advance Auto selling alternators for $15 and $20. Um, so Advance Auto said, look, I might as well close this place. He had a 10, a 10-year lease on Advance Auto. That's why you don't see nobody going in there right now. And so the owner of Advance Auto lives in California. So he said, well, you gonna honor this lease. That's what he told Advance Auto. And Advance Auto gives them steal $10,000 a month. So he like, if you can't match that $10,000 a month, that's why he's not talking with people. And that's why you don't see anyone in Advance Auto. So the employees, that was inside shrinkage. They end up stealing on the inside of it. And we built that from, uh, from nothing. And to put it there.
You, I think you got, you got a question, Kevin.
Well, this is just really a statement. Now, the shrinkage, I'm, I'm a victim of the shrinkage. You know, and, and the thing is that the shrinkage, like you say, people leave the hood chasing something that look big to them.
They do.
They stay in the hood. We live in the hood. We love the hood, we afraid the hood. Well, this is our culture. And I can't be deceived that the male, the dark-skinned brothers, male is living and doing good. What's your opinion of that?
Yeah, they, they, um, it's called Place Matters. And, um, CMHA and HUD steered our people. They told them, I want you to live in Huff, Fairfax, Glenville, but we'll give you these Section 8 vouchers. And they moved them to Beechwood, South Euclid, and other places. And so I'm trying to build. And so other people go back and talk about gentrification. But it's only 12% of African-Americans in the county. Not in the city, but in the county. So when you move our people to Beechwood and to South Euclid and places like that, what's gonna happen in the long run?
There's no people gonna start coming down here.
But when you, but right, they come down here. The white people come here, but it scatter our people. So the danger of that is, when the younger people want to become state rep or councilman or whatever the case may be, you not gonna have that population. Because a lot of our people follows and they go out. You see what I'm saying, Roland? They go to Palmer, because we couldn't, before you was born. Bud, no, we couldn't go to Palmer, could we?
No.
You can't go to Palmer, you couldn't go to places like that. You couldn't. But they will go, they're going out to these different suburbs as Place Matters. Because they telling them what Place Matters, if you look that up and read the book, don't. Because you could survive better if you lived in South Euclid. Your life expectancy is longer living in Euclid and places like that. And so it's making our people spread out. Because we were all concentrated in Glenville. You couldn't see the sidewalk here right when you had the Islamic community here because majority of our people were here. And if you left and you went over to the University Circle area, you would get stopped by the police. Just go in the University Circle area. Like I got stopped over there.
Well, that, that brings me, because we was talking about security and shrinkage and, and stuff like that. Um, that brings me, we seen, we seen what happened in the community when the police pulled over somebody and they were to us out of jurisdiction. Uh, I've got privy to, uh, some emergency ordinances. And you were a part of it.
I do, I passed it.
Uh, Mike Polensick and Blaine Griffin. Can you speak to that? Those emergency ordinances called for the expansion of patrol for Case Western Police to expand their patrol outside of the university. And also, uh, University Circle Incorporated. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, UCI.
Three years to the day, actually.
Yeah, it's about three years, yeah, three years to the day. Well, before you do that, because it's not just the councilman. The councilman doesn't have soul. People think, you're not a totalitarian, you're not a dictator. You don't have the authority like Trump. You know what I'm saying? You don't. Um, even when you build something, you, um, they'll send out letters and notices. And you have to have meetings in the neighborhood before you build something, before they get jurisdiction. So UCI had meetings with, uh, different block clubs and street clubs in the neighborhood before they could expand to Ashbury. And then the residents would have to say yes or no. Can you expand to Ashbury? Once they say that, then what we do, we legislate it into, which legislation, we legislate it into law that is okay. And then they can, um, come down and testify. But she, who was that, Rick? Kate Borders. Kate Borders, uh, pushed it and they had, they held meetings. And you have to hold, hold meetings also. Not only with residents, but other key stakeholders before you can make, uh, make that move. And I legislated. I didn't champion it though.
What was your thinking apart, being a part of that? And wanting to sign off on that?
Well, I vetoed it the first time. I vetoed the first time.
Why so?
I still was mad because they pulled me over in University Circle, so I was still mad with folks.
Yeah, I'm trying to avoid being pulled over, so.
I tried to see, I tried to see what's going on. But that's, yeah, that was, uh, um, UCI. But, but the thing is, Kate, Kate worked with me and she got rid of that police chief, and I was real happy. The police chief is the one that was pushing it. And then 94% of my people was being stopped by the police. And that's why I did not go with, and you know, Brother Muhammad, me and Prim was going against Prim. Because I said, I told my residents, don't vote for that person. 94% of the tickets are going to black folks. And when Kate Borders became the president of UCI, I said, I'm gonna work with you, but you need to fire that police chief. Because when you give my, nowhere in the world, and this is what they told me, when Christopher name was there. He said, look, the only reason 94% of African-Americans are giving tickets is because, um, we're surrounded by East Cleveland. We're surrounded by, um, Glenville. We're surrounded by Huff. I like, you talking stupid talk. I said, because Cleveland Clinic, they don't hardly hire black folks.
They don't work.
University Hospital don't hardly hire black folks. And they travel to and from University Circle. So you turn around, you racially profiling my people. So I'm not gonna support you, I'm not gonna vote for you. And I sent a letter to the block clubs over there and told them why.
What did you feel about that post when you seen it? Like, how did you take, besides what I said and implicating you in it?
You know what made me think about that post? You and I and Minister Roland Muhammad fought to take McGinty out. We fought to take our, uh, uh, uh.
Judge McDonald.
O'Donnell. And you and I worked close and close together. And we met in Glen Village to take O'Donnell out to make sure O'Donnell did not become judge twice. I'm the only council member, it'd take heart to do that. And you and I were very close doing that because we were mad because John O'Donnell let Melissa Williams go and Timothy Russell go, I mean, because Brilo go for the murdering of those two individuals. While everybody else was marching, we said, well, no, don't march. We gonna take them out. And you know me for working together. And the same thing with Roland would, um, have worked with me when, when, at Patrick Carey, now it's W. T. Jones. When, you remember that, Roland? They didn't hire a number of white folks. What we do with that? And we shut that school down and we made them hire black folks. And Roland was with us when we got McGinty as well, prosecuted McGinty, as well as John O'Donnell. So you had a close relationship with me. And that, that's what really hurt me right there from our relationship of battling for black folks. And that's why I came to see and talk with you.
What, what did you feel about what we were trying to express? That these people were breaking their jurisdiction and violating?
I talked with them, but what they can do, and even East Cleveland come here sometime because they chase people in car chases. Euclid come down here also, I talked with Euclid. Bradenau, I get to Bradenau too. Um, when they certify by the potter, by the state, the state is really, they give the city of Cleveland permission to bring in hired police and to protect the residents. Cleveland gives them a memorandum of understanding, like the legislation. They can go out of their jurisdiction if someone break a crime in University Circle. They can go out of that jurisdiction. Same thing with Bradenau. You see Bradenau pulling people over in Cleveland or I-90 because if you break the law, which they perceive you breaking the law, and Bradenau, they can chase you there because you broke the law in Bradenau. So they can, they can do that.
Now, can you debunk some things? Um, you had people in the community wanted to take enforcement in their own hands. They had man patrol in communities. They were getting funded, I think by, I don't know if it was public or private. But then I was seeing a lot of turmoil in between the groups. I was thinking maybe getting these, uh, college police forces involved, was that had anything to do with that? Like, instead of steering the monies and letting people police themselves? Was there a thing about, let's steer resources to establish platforms already that does this? Was any of that involved in the thinking?
Yeah, the city council gave money, money to, um, Hoopastag, the Cleveland Foundation. And the Cleveland Foundation gives the money to a lot of the activist groups, to police in the community. And they walk the neighborhood. But the Cleveland Foundation felt that, um, they're trying to do prevention. Here's an example. See that man over there, Roland Muhammad? Before your time, before your time, in the 90s, he never talk about it. Nobody could go into the projects down in King Kennedy.
Well, that was my time, because you talking about the beef hot dogs on the pizza.
Nobody could go in there, he know, except him and the Muslims.
That's right.
Except him and the Muslims. They wouldn't let nobody else go in there because he knew the people in the community. So on that thinking, they felt that, um, I'm not gonna mention these groups' names since they walk the streets and they have an up-close view and a genuine concern and a sensitive ear to listen to the people. Like Bud was the same way. Bud met me in the neighborhood. And before I became a councilman, I was in the hood for about 25 to 30 years before I even ran for office, doing things in the neighborhood. And that's why I met Bud and I met Roland Muhammad. And they got an up-close view. So the city felt that if these guys in the neighborhood, they can do, they can be our interruptives. And some of the guys were men, and they need to see men. They need to see men in the community. And that's what we felt and that's why they tried with that program to have a man there. Because one thing, we talk about building things, but you build a nation, but you gotta have man and fatherhood. And that's what we talked about even with the Million Man March, was about man and fatherhood.
So what do you think about groups taking those, taking interest in their own hands to police their community? And formulate groups to do that? What do you think about that? Are you in support of such thing like that in your ward?
That's a good thing if they, if, only if they out there in the neighborhood and they've been doing it. I look at people and I judge people who've been working in the community.
Because you were on the safety committee.
I chaired the safety committee. I did, I did. I chaired the safety committee.
That's why it's pertinent to ask you that, you know?
I chaired, I was the chairman of the safety committee and, um, you know, I pushed for, uh, matter of fact, we, we did a lot of things when I chaired. We even protest and we protest Cleveland Clinic. You came up there and we did that.
Yeah, I got.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
We closed down it.
Yeah, Cleveland Clinic, y'all had me thrown in the slammer. Y'all had me thrown in the slammer, man. Y'all tried to break my camera up, man.
But that's how we got that, um, that, um, DuH Hospital Emergency Center. Because remember, remember they closed Hero Hospital.
Yeah, we were out there in the cold.
And they told everybody, told all the black folks to go.
You came down, you said, you said, yeah, I just had a meeting with the mayor and Toby Crossgrove. Do you know who that is? I said, yeah. He said, yeah. Well, after the meeting, they told me to call my dogs off. Y'all know what he talking about.
Yeah. You know what, and you know what? And when I was battling cancer, guess where Toby put me at? In room eight fifty in front of where we were protesting. He did, man. I can look down where we're protesting at. Yeah, we got you now, man. I'm looking out the window, I'm looking out the window. And I'm seeing, I'm looking out there, we protested right there in front of Cleveland Clinic about healthcare inequality while they closed Hero Hospital down. And they put my room right here. I'm like, man.
What did you think of that?
Well, he ended up saying my life letter, you know, I helped doing that because, you know, um, yes, he did that on purpose. So I can just write to give me what I'm thinking about it. Yeah, what you thinking about that? That's what he like, yeah. I'm gonna put you right here so you can look out there. Yeah, you remember Bud when y'all was praying for me, man? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because you told me at the time it won like a ninety day re-free for the community. You know?
Man, I took, yeah, to give him his permission to have, get back guns and stuff, you know, and I was the safety chair. You know, a lot of the council members didn't like that, but, uh, you know, I mean, you tear that hospital down, but East Cleveland, they backstabbed us because Gary Norton turned, he cut the deal. And, um, um, to tear down Hero Hospital, the mayor of East Cleveland.
Now, now Kevin.
He got us, man, on that deal.
Like you say, you were an activist before you got into politics. You've been with the, uh, with the, uh, city council since two thousand and one. So you heavily invested in the community. You're hearing, when you're hearing things about Gold Coast and a Renaissance, what is your thinking to that?
Matter of fact, I like it, the Renaissance, um, project. I like it a lot. Um, I think some things need to be changed in it, but let me say this before I get to it. We are working with some African American females on a hundred and five and superior. And someone put out there, she dealing a mental health house. No, she's not. She's, she's building a respite center. So I'm like, you don't know what a respite center is? That's to rehab people, like if they get strokes, whatever the case may be. And it, and it will correlate with Hiscock Center for Women that Yvonne and I just built, that twenty-seven million dollar building. And it will correlate with bringing University Hospital, building there, then you got the respite center there. Because we need to have healthcare, uh, in the, in the community, but it's no mental health piece. And so we are building that. I've been giving African American, um, uh, businesses, uh, money. Um, to get to your point, now this is what I would add to it, Roland, reading it. We had Islamic center here with the Muslims, right? But see, they gotta take the Renaissance and I help out with it. They gotta go into schools. You gotta cultivate the children. You talk about crime. Children need to see, especially young boys. Because you know Bud, I pushed that fatherhood movement, that was me. And took it to a national level. So I look at this, I look at it this way. You gotta go into the schools. You have children, three quarters of the headed household is headed by females, right? Three quarters. So when the children go to school, their teachers mainly are females. So they don't get a chance to see a man.
A great man.
Right. And so you do the Renaissance here, but then you gotta teach them the way. You have to go into, uh, not Patrick Carey anymore, we changed that, Stephanie Tub Jones, FDR, and work with the children. And then when you cultivate them from the little league, then they'll eventually come here and start doing entrepreneurship also. So you know, you'll see men, uh, uh, people like Roland now, eventually we're gone. But then you cultivate the young people to step in and then they do what we're doing. And that way this dream won't die.
So basically what you're saying.
Bring the kids in there also.
You see the foundation principle of a Renaissance in the youth.
I see it in, in the movement that, um, in a Renaissance CDC now. But the other layer, you gotta bring up the farm team as well. And you could do a project, overlapping project. You can build that. It's the same time you put those children in there because you could teach them and show them the way. At the same time, in doing the construction of the building, teaching them how to do the implementation of the project, teach them how to do the execution and the planning, you teach the children that. Because this is what they do in the suburbs. They bring their children, the doctors and the dentists and the lawyers. Children have to see success every day, right? So they bring them into it. Career days, but when we go to career days, I was at a career day, uh, today. We talk about working for people, but we gotta learn how to master our own destiny so we can do for self and take care of the communities and things like that. So you gotta bring the children in so they know the way. But they don't, in the schools, they teach them how to really work for someone.
Ha, ha, yeah.
You know, but they don't teach them how to master their own destiny and start to have their own businesses. When you do that and, uh, have your own businesses, then we can hire our people in the community. And then when we hire our people in the community, you're able to cut down on crime. Like, remember I was a councilman in Little Italy also. And they had, you know, the people would walk to or from work and that. So in the Renaissance movement, while we pushing the implementation of it, you know? And I mentioned Roland, I walked him in to see, um, some important people in the city. And a lot of, a lot of these businesses, I walked him in. I mentioned when I met with him and some of the other brothers, I walked you in.
I think you got a question, um, um, brother Kevin Conwell.
Kevin Conwell, listen.
Yes, Bud.
This is a question, I, I, I wanna ask you is that, you know, the image of is important in the hood. The schools is important, but the teaching of the school. Now, we do have power. So we need to exude our power to prevent the teaching of the school.
That's true.
You know, I mean, because like you said, we need strong men.
Right.
We must have strong men, but in a dilapidated neighborhood, they only send dilapidated men. So what we have to do, this is my opinion. We have to do something about that. And I think, my opinion is C, CDC Superior Renaissance is head, you know, that, that spearhead now. Bringing up the image of the dark skinned man. That is important. I have kids. And my kids been doing what they doing because they have me as a daddy. Now, I know it's all in school as far as what you're saying, but it's also about the hood. It's all about the hood, that's my opinion. It's all about hood. If it ain't ghetto, it ain't us. I don't care how you put it. It just ain't us. We, we got a culture that is important for us to live it out. Our culture. We can't keep on changing our kid culture into someone else's culture. It's not right. It's not right. I mean, schools is important, but we can't take away our kids being existence. There, I need kids. I need my son. Look at him. He doing what he supposed to do, but he started by years old. In the hood! My wife wanted to send him to college, to Auburn University.
I remember that, I remember that.
I told him, no!
I remember that.
But my daughter, she went. But I didn't want my son to go. It's too much time. He don't need that. He don't need the teaching of another man. He need the teaching of his dad. And look at him now. So I, I love saying that and thinking.
You know what Bud, when you met me, I was pioneering the fatherhood movement. And, uh, getting dads to take care of their children. Remember that? And, um, there's another, there's another glitch to that. Um, really we were pushing manhood, but there's another glitch to that. The system, Biden and Bill Clinton were sending our African American males, men, to prison. Away from their children.
Prison pipeline.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And see, here's the thing. With the state reps and the state senators, the, we're pushing that too. And the, and the people they needed to go into the prisons to do the work was us. African American males. African American males. So we started a program called Inside Outside Dads while they were in there. So that the children were right to their fathers, so that the children would, um, even, it could even be about the Indiana Pacers, the Cavs games, whatever the case may be. We wanted them to connect with their dads. So that when they got out of prison and came home, that father still would be connected to his children. You see what I'm saying? That part right there is the nurturing part. But a lot of times what they do, they don't want the father to be connected to the children. So when the father come out of the prison, he has nobody to connect to. And then he do something wrong and he goes back to prison. You see what I'm saying? So in the fatherhood movement, we were pushing that, um, that piece that I gotta get back around to it. Where they had in the county pushing it though. But you met me, we were doing that, what you talking about.
You got, you got another question, Ken.
Councilman, uh, some of the things you're saying is incorrect. But the core of everything or every community is for a man to have power, he must have ownership of land. That's where he gets powerful. And he can't true, he really can't be a true father unless he have ownership of land. And when the land come all the resources we need to build our own reality. And you can teach children all day long, but if you don't have a community where they can see their own existence and see the work of all their own hand, then teaching them nothing don't mean having a value. Because what now is that when they looking at what can my father produce? As opposed to what the enemy is producing. So if the enemy produce something and we don't produce anything, then what they don't have to do is that regardless what you teach them, they go to the enemy or going to white folks to get what they need because you don't have an existing father. So every community that comes to America, the first thing they do is build a community and they find ownership of land to secure themselves. And they come together, they secure themselves and they have what they call, uh, they have, uh, impulse control. And what I mean by impulse control is that they don't buy from nobody but themselves. And they don't allow nobody else to come to their community, own and run their community. So what we are trying to do is trying to stash the same thing. Our young people, as young people, they wanna see models, they wanna see examples. And what we do, we teach them that, but we don't bring them to the land. We don't bring to the ownership of community where they can come and see themselves and build their own reality. So Superior Renaissance is all about that. Then when you come, children learn from an example being seen and the education they come as a result of what they see.
That's right.
Because if you just teach them and they go and see white folks all the time, and white folk control the education, control the money, control the land, control everything, then we could never be, we could never be anybody. So that's the whole purpose of Superior Renaissance. Because we want on the land. You talked earlier about, uh, what Superior looked like. The Muslim on one end, the black national on the other end. Because we control that.
That's right.
And then you, also you the councilman of Little Italy. Well, Little Italy called that, controlled that. A person go to Little Italy, sit at a table, get an Italian dinner, get some Italian wine, listen to some Italian music, get some Italian.
Everything Italian, everything Italian, everything Italian.
Then you think about Italian Italy, the motherland, and he go walk away, feed it good, despite any problem he had. But where can a black youth come to see himself, to see his culture, to see his art, to see his music? You know, to hear his language, where can he come? And the only place that existed like that was Superior. And that's why we try to rebuild Superior.
Not, 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 brother Kevin Conwell, I'm hearing there's a rumor that, uh, we started Little Africa in the community?
Yeah, it's, um, in Richard Starr's area. I don't know if they had the money. It was the OYMCA. I think it's on Cedar, somewhere around there in Cedar. The OYMCA, yeah, yeah, yeah. The OYMCA that's right there. Now, with Roland, when you came to the meeting, because we, we discussing building and, and this brother was with me and the mayor Frank Jackson. When we started discussing building the area right here in the south. Always with us, which is a good thing. Um, I get that. The only thing I'm saying in the Renaissance plan, when you start building, have those children with you so that they can see what's going on. I never said no. I walked Minister Roland into and introduced him to Telsa Jackson. And I said, and right after Roland left, then another group came in, African American females, Teresa Beasley and Bridget Grant, and they wanted a hundred and five and superior. That was in your target area. It was your target area, but not that spot there. I'm not gonna mention the spots we talked about. We said we, now the people, they watching you and they'll try to, you know what I'm saying? They will. Yeah, they will, man. They, they'll come in there. So these sisters are looking to do a groundbreaking, um, sometime later this year. And we got another African American, all those houses back there, Henry Butler. Henry Butler, uh, built a lot of, um, houses. Uh, just all over there for, um, Bueller and places like that. It's an African American male and he have children working with, working with him. So you got that sister, you got Henry Butler, um, um, doing it. You got, uh, Jer, uh, Jeremy from C L E, African American, that's working. And I've given money to African American businesses as well in the, uh, in the community. So, um, um, he know, he know, I know, you know?
Nah, you expressing me candidly, you know, you saying.
And then we did East Side Market, which is another story though. Because that brother, and I'm now putting it on you, brother Roland, but that, you know what happened with that piece. You know where that brother is at.
Yeah, man.
You know, he took, he took the money. He took the money, finagle the money, but not from the city. And the only reason he didn't take it from the city, because I did performance based measurements.
That guy's in hot water right now, you know?
He's in prison.
Yeah, hot water.
He stole the money. A real quick sidebar, um, Jeff Johnson, because see you moved things around when I took over the ward. Um, got Neon to, uh, to go in there with East Side Market. And he did a good thing, good job by doing that. The city was ignoring the East Side Market, but they building up the West Side Market. You see what I'm saying? And so then Jeffrey before, um, we integrated the wards, Ward eighty-nine, had gotten the, uh, East Side Market with Neon and the other guy that got a hot water. And so it came to me when I took over the project, I wanted performance based measurements and for the city not to just give a blank check. Performance based measurements mean if you do demo, then we'll pay you money. If you paint the building, then we'll pay you money. And the money went to Neon and didn't go to him. But then he put, uh, for us, whatever, uh, purchase orders to Neon and Neon gave him the money and he stole the money from Neon. Almost a million dollars. And that million dollars would have helped that site to build up. But he stole the money and he went gambling with the money, you know?
So is it, is it still in place, performance incentives in your ward? Do you see it like that?
Yeah, I, I'll do performance based measurements in a minute. Because see, one of the main things you wanna do.
Did you do that with your places that you established?
Performance based measurements.
With who though?
Performance based measurements. Well, I'll tell the city to do the performance based measurements, the council member. See, the minister, the job of a councilman is to bring home money and write policy. That's his main job, is to bring home money and write policy. But if you get in the middle of a CDC or you get in the middle of the administration, you start dealing with money. You saw what happened to the last brother. You don't wanna deal, you don't wanna touch money at all. You just tell them at the table, look, I want you to do on this contract with them, performance based measurements. And so then James Green from the city will go out and say, he have a spec chart and look at it, say, okay, they hit these dependencies or they did these milestones, so therefore they should be reimbursed. But he won't tell me. I'll look over it to make sure that it's right. But he'll, it's in the contract, it's in the scope of things. So James Green would do that because they have a performance based measurement. So if you do a certain amount of things, then you'll get paid, you'll get reimbursed. If you don't do it, you won't get reimbursed. That's same way with CDCs with Fomiko's Foundation. They'll do some work because they got an endowment, man. I think about thirteen million, fifteen million dollars. So they'll do some work and then they'll get the work to the city and the city will reimburse them. You know, it's performance based measurements, everything is performance based measurements. If you don't do that, you'll get in trouble.
You got another question.
Yeah. I'm sorry for going so long, man.
That's all right. Uh, that's just giving me a little more thing to say. Uh, I wanted to say, uh, Minister Roland has been on the forefront. Minister Roland has been on the forefront for a long time in the Nation of Islam. And they teach our children to be men. So in other places, they don't teach them who they are. They culture, you know what I'm saying? And then the next thing you know, we got the white mind and the black behind. They ain't thinking about us. And want to do for self and help our people. Now, I did twenty-five years in prison. And I know the Nation of Islam got a track record coming in and out of prisons, helping brothers, teaching the knowledge on their self, their God, their culture and their language, and teaching them to go out and do for self and be productive men. You know, you don't have too many men in the household. So how you gonna teach your child to be a man if he ain't got a father figure? Then we gotta teach them how to do for self. Because if we don't have no land, they ain't gonna respect us. Who taking over in our communities? The Arabs? The Jews? The Jews ain't gonna let you come in their community and take over. The Italians, they gonna let you go in their community and take over. Everybody come in our community and take over. That's why they call us Gophers, because we go for anything. So I, I, I think it's important and, uh, Superior Renaissance is doing a great work. So I, I, I think it's important and, and, uh, Superior Renaissance is doing a great work. We go around the community and talk to people and we got to protect our people. Regardless if you set up a business across the street, you know, this is warfare. You got to have an army, you got to have soldiers out there to protect our women and our children. If they going in these schools and they ain't being protected, they don't feel safe. We got to protect our own community, we can't depend on nobody else. So, uh, I think it's important and I know for a fact what I see, what Superior Renaissance is doing and, uh, uh, from the leadership of Minister Roland, he's diligent in what he do. Diligent and constantly talking to the youth. And that's what we got to do, we got to reach our hands and extend our hand out to the room.
Yeah, 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 that's true, that's true.
Because that ain't what we doing.
That's true.
Taking them to go and, and holding their hand and taking them somewhere and see white folk got this and white folk got that and we ain't got nothing. They want to see what it's about being a man. And a man is gonna do for self. And he gonna own land. And that's what we got to teach our children, we got to come together and bring our resource together so we can do for self because times is getting hard. There's gonna be a time we gonna wish we did do for self and follow the teachings of the most honorable God in the world. And this man right here, I bear witness, he constantly working night and day. And we need all we can get to help back Minister Roland Mohammed, this Superior Renaissance. Thank you, brother.
Hey, Kev, you know, you know, you know, uh, play a T, minister.
Minister, hold on one second. My father was with Malcolm X. He knows that. I grew up as a Muslim. My wife went to Islamic schools. He know, me know that. We met Minister Hamzah when he, when he came in with Minister Hamzah. So the fatherhood group was all about manhood. This brother know that. When you read and you see a brother with heart go after the county prosecutor, he's not afraid. When you see this brother go after a judge twice to make sure he doesn't get in, he's not afraid. He understands manhood. Minister, Minister Roland would tell you, Kevin came in the nation and, uh, and his daddy and stuff, we welcome Minister and we love his brother Roland and to the nation. So I'm there. You just got to read it and look it up.
Well, it, it, hearing, hearing that, and it's great to hear that you share a lot of the same principle with like the people of the, um, Renaissance. You know, you being a councilman and being invested in this community for so long, do you see steering land?
I can steer.
Or can, bad choice of word.
Bad choice of words. Scratch that.
No, that's funny because somebody else told me that's a bad choice of word.
Um, you could be in there, you could be in there with the other brothers.
No, I don't.
You good, we playing with you, playing T, man.
What I'm saying is.
Yeah, 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 he know the power of words, he good.
I mean, I could steer you to a place.
Don't use that word no more, man.
If you want to get steering somewhere, you know? No, no, well, no, what I'm saying is, uh, knowing that to be true, that men cannot be men without having ownership in their community, do you see it like that?
Oh, yeah, you got to master your own destiny, you got to own your community. And like you said, I was a council member up in Little Italy, um.
Like, do you go to sleep and wake up with that on your mind like that?
Well, I'd wake up with a lot of things on my mind, policy, legislation, those kind of things, very, very important. Uh, would be a great thing. We, we discussed some things. What I'm gonna do, again, is walk them in. And it's not only, people look at Cleveland City Council and we talked the other day, I ain't getting the other stuff, Roland. Minister, we gonna have to deal with the Republicans as well as go downstate, deal with the governor and all those people, because you know, I talk with the governor as well. I'm gonna say we gonna deal. So I'll walk you in. Sometime when people will do this, they'll say, well, I'll write you a letter behind it and the letter is counterfeit. But if they look up and you see me looking at them like we did when we protested Cleveland Clinic and all those kind of things, you gotta see a man that, one thing about, um, leadership, you gotta have heart as well.
Yeah.
You gotta, you can't just say, um, you the councilman or whatever with leadership, you gotta have heart. So I walk them in, I walked them in before and we protest, we went at the people before, so I, I'll have to walk them in. But the other thing I would have to do, um, is give you guys a project manager from the city to study.
And you know, and that's funny you said that. Because I always thought that would need to be the case.
You need a project manager. All these projects around here have a project manager. And what we do with project manager, we go through the, um, different phases that you have to hit certain dependencies. You might say you want to build this or you build that, but it's certain, um, um, episodes that lead up to hitting your milestones, like dependencies. So when you do a project, right now you guys are building a case for the Superior Renaissance. You're building a case. But from that case, then what we do, project managers sit down and look at the implementation of the case. The implementation of the case means that you talk with all your key stakeholders and then you go into your planning, that you do like raise money for planning. This, this stuff is important, this is how we build things. And then it's phases, you just don't say you want to build it. You do risk analysis, all those kind of things. But I won't be there to do it, the project manager would do it, but guess what? Councilman Conwell, who is an MBA, know how to read those kind of things and know where the money at in the budget. So I'll say Roland, uh, or Minister Mohammed, but you got to talk with me and tell me, Kevin, the city didn't get back in touch with me or I got issues with this or that. We didn't look at the land right, you got to tell me. And then I'll tell you, I'll read, I'll read the specs, the specs and to let you know where you at.
You got another question.
Yeah, Councilman Conwell. This is more or less a question in a statement. We're, we're actually not understanding the language of these people in charge. I say in charge, we're not understanding the language. So when it's falling on deaf ears, we, we don't know. So what I'm saying is that it sound private what, what you're saying to me. It sound like it's private. But I know that it can't be private with a brother like yourself letting us know.
Well, Bud, you was with us yesterday and I did reach out to Dennis. Dennis called me, uh, I'm not gonna say his whole name because we talked about that as well. You was with us, Bud, and he said he would meet with you next week. So we were talking about certain buildings, you know what I'm saying? And I said I wouldn't mention the buildings on the air because other people would try to come in and. Yeah, yeah, because you was there with us. So he called me already and, uh, he said, uh, he'll meet with us next week, probably Thursday or Friday. And then we'll start, but then when you meet with us, you should write down everything that we say. And then say, and the thing is, what you gotta say. Well, I don't like taping people and stuff, but, but, but you can write it down and then you can say when.
And they can deny the right, that ain't my right.
Well, do you know?
They can say that ain't my voice.
Yeah, but I ain't trying to set people up, dude, I just, that's just my principle.
We just playing their game.
Yeah, I know, that's their game, that's, it is their game.
That's their game. I'm not a player.
But that's weak. I just found it too, man.
Detect me from some or reject me, I can detect that.
I like that, man.
So whatever we got to do, you know, to bring this community, this hood, what it's for to be, to go cold.
Now, Kev, Kev, I'm sorry, did I interrupt you, Bud?
None at all.
Kev, I know you told me candidly before, like, uh, you say you really want to help this community, but you feel like people don't organize well enough to, to get with you and surround you and give you the tools you need to help them. Do you still feel like that? And if you do feel like that, how could that change in this community, in this ward?
That's right.
Well, what I have to do, you know, in leadership, me with my background, I can't be in, I can't be everywhere anymore because you know what I went through with, with some of my, um, health-related issues. Um, but I could go in, like I mentioned to Bud and Roland, with my background in project management and MBA and economics and stuff, I could go in there and follow because I can manage stuff to see what's going. I do it at City Council now by me being one of the elder city council members. I visit the other wards and talk and manage by me being OG. To see, to see stuff because with my experience in, 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 uh, in history, uh, it's good for me to organize and manage. That's, that's very, very important.
See, that was my purpose, I wasn't, the purpose of asking you to come on wasn't an indictment of Kevin Conwell. It's to see how Mr. Kevin Conwell and people like the Superior Renaissance, how they can work together to achieve, because it sound like you have similar goals.
Yeah, we do, they looked at, uh, some of the stuff I wrote, like, for example, we have some other buildings that's gonna come up on Superior, um, you know, uh, on the Superior, like I mentioned the Respite Center. Uh, there's another groundbreaking coming, a hundred and twelve in Superior. And I went and got a lot of money while we were going through ARPA. We're gonna do something with VA a hundred and twelve and build, build that area with houses right up, right on this strip here. But it's not where we going at because I respect that, they had told me before what they wanted. So you're not gonna see me building there, you know what I'm talking about? I just got one invention, but I can't. But it's a hundred and twelve, it's an open space lot, we're gonna build there as well. You know, uh, you got, when you, when you, uh, place matters, when you start building things, it keeps crying down in the community also, you know?
Help me if I'm wrong, it seem like, I, I get the sense like all this building and it really ain't for the people that's here, it's for the people that's looking to come here. Can you dispel that notion?
Well, you got the Respite Center, the Respite Center is gonna, is for us. That's for us, just right here. You got Hitchcock Center for Women, you have women here, three quarters of the household is headed by females. And, and the Hitchcock Center for Women is gonna help to rehab women, women around here, happy as heck. That building is coming, it's for women and children, not just women, but women and children, mothers and families together. That's right over there on Ansel Road, it's being built right now. You have the University Hospital site, uh, that's over there on Churchill. I mean, that's for people, this, uh, this in the community there. And then we also, uh, looking on St. Clair to bring back the Glenville Y M C A. We building, we looking to build that as well. You know, we halfway there, so when you have to have people in mind, remember I mentioned earlier, you can't build without having, uh, I might say I want to build that, but then they'll have community meetings. Like that Respite Center that they're looking to build, they held two community meetings at Reverend Warren's Church over there at Bethany. And the city was there with them, taking notes and doing survey analysis. So you can't build, you can't even change a street without people involved with it. You gotta have it, then they say, remember I said even about with the police over here? They met with the block clubs, block clubs said, yeah, they wanted it, then the Councilman Conwell legislated. If they say no, then you're gonna have some problems. So you, it's, it's not like Trump, I said, I can't do it like Trump. You know, being a more, I can't do that.
You got another.
Nah, nah, nah.
You got a question, Kevin?
Kevin, you spoke on how like, well, Brother Roland spoke about like how you need you guys mentors and leader for us as an example to see. So whatever thing that we got going on here, we got the youth, us three right here, we got all our mentors, they in the room right now. What can we do to grow this? So we can bring in more youth and build up this block right here, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we'll see.
You know what I'm saying, when I come down here, I watch the Arabs grow across the street, next door, they got drive through this building. It's a lot of development.
Yeah, they bringing their money.
But we want to see, I, I understand it, but we want to see how we can grow because we building up the, we building up the money, but we need help from the city as well too, it's not just us, you know what I'm saying? We a non-for-profit.
It's the hood.
The three of us, we need your help, honestly.
You could, you could, you could build out like I build up the arts and everything. Sonia Pryor Jones, you have to see Sonia Pryor Jones down in the Mayor's Youth Development. They give grants out, I think, every quarter or every six months. Just like we did with the guys you had mentioned me about, just walk in the neighborhood, they give grants out. The thing that you have to do, what we don't do, we sit back and we'll discuss something, but you go down to City Council and you, yeah, you meet with the mayor, you meet with Councilman Conwell. I'll introduce you to Sonia Pryor Jones. You build a relationship with her. It's three things you need in life, education, skills and relationships. One of the masters of that is sitting right there, Minister Roland Mohammed. He came down, he built relationships, when he come in, right now, all the council members know him. And that's how I knew he was down there, King Kennedy doing what he was doing. Because you build relationships and then from the relationships come what you want to do with the money when you talking with us. So Sonia Pryor Jones is the person, you come down, I'll introduce you to her.
We come.
Yeah, you come down on Monday and I, I'll introduce you to Sonia Pryor Jones. And then she'll tell you when it's called, request for proposals, when you got a request for proposal to do. Especially, this is beautiful right here. They might have you go into Glenville or Stephanie Tubbs Jones, F D R, teaching the children. So I'll introduce you to her and if they don't return your phone calls, that's when you gotta let me know what's going on and not put it on Facebook and stuff. Call me, at least call me and let me know what's going on. Because you got the equipment. I think you guys interviewed her, here before, Sonia.
Yeah. Yeah, right around the corner, right on.
But, but write her number down, I'll give you the number later because other people watching, they'll say, oh, I gotta beat them to it. But I'll give you the number already, you know? You were with us when you was a little boy, I remember you was a little boy, you was with us.
Are, are you, do you have aspirations to run again? Oh, you got, hold on, you got another question before that.
Uh, Councilman Conwell, what we are looking for in this whole Superior Renaissance is that we see everybody in our community that got control. And we see the manhood with Arabs, we see the manhood with the other groups that come in that build these government high rises, the government apartment that don't even live in the community. That they, and we talking about we need manhood. Well, can't the, uh, city and whatnot look at us as a group? For every, every, uh, thing that Arab, everything that Arab have, we should have a black manhood group having the same thing in the community. For every building that these outsiders come and build these high rises, we should have a black group of men in the community doing the same thing. So it should be a match for every time they do something, there's a black group doing something. But every time somebody building the black community, there's no black group of men doing anything. So therefore, you talk about manhood, so where's the manhood? Everybody respected because they built it. And then, and then, and then we say we want to help black people, then let's get back, I told Zach three years ago, when the Marouche Brothers just starting out and Zach was telling me, they wasn't, they wasn't about anything. But they had support of the Jews and everybody else. And now the Marouche Brothers building all over the city, they actually have a big construction company now because they had help along the way. I've been trying to build things in the city of Cleveland for years. When we was down in Longwood Shopping Plaza, you know what I mean, the owner, he wanted me to have it. But he was forty thousand dollars, water bill, and he wanted to take over the plaza. I went to Mike White, Mike White would help me. I went to George Ford, George Ford would help me. You probably saying now, now trying to build Superior Renaissance doing the very same. And all we want, I'm not asking for money.
Ah, we not a money whore.
We don't need no money.
Because, because we are a baby organization. I want a breast, I can feed off, I need breast milk.
Want to eat.
And breast milk is information, you know, you understand, it's caring, you know, nurturing, you know, and nourishing a person so they can grow. So therefore, as a result of Superior Renaissance, you know, trying to do the same thing, set up these images that everybody else got. That's what we trying to do, we trying to set up, everybody else got. Everybody is coming and they can be honored and respected for what they do on Superior throughout the city. There is no black group that's honored by what we see. All we talking about primary, there was street stuff, there was protection of the community, there was school stuff. But the power is then the ownership of the community.
Yes.
That's where the power is.
Agreed.
And that's what we looking for, so there's nobody throughout the city that's talking about ownership. They talking about these little pilot program.
But where the party at?
Just get money, but end up with no results. I'm on the Communal Board and they upset because they spend our four hundred thousand dollars a year to all these groups that ought to be doing safety and security. But there's no results. And so they are upset by getting all this money, but the crime is still going on.
I hate that, man.
You still killing one another. And ought to be effective as a group. You still killing one another, and all to be effective as a group, you better have a safe house, if you talking your.
Yeah, I hate that too.
They take them there for a cooling off period. All they do is take them there, don't have no safe house, and then at the point, another point is that all they do is cycle out to evaluate them, and next they go, they got them on medication.
Yeah.
Or they got them in some program, and all this right here, but what we want to do, if we own this community, we can have our own clinic. We can have our own safe house, we can have our own business, we can have our own school. But you gotta help develop the Superior Renaissance to do all that, and it takes time to do that. Now, Ms. Tessa Jackson agreed to help me, because she said she had the same problem in New Orleans.
And I walked you in.
And walked me in, but Mayor Beers fired her.
He did fire her.
She stood up to him about all these developers, these white developers ripping the city off, getting all this money and not paying.
He did fire her, he did fire her. But you know what, but you know what, here's the thing. He did fire her, I walked you in, and we were gonna start moving on things. Um, you talked about Mayor Mike White. But you skipped Mayor Frank Jackson.
Because during the time of Mayor Frank Jackson, I wasn't doing anything.
But, but I'm saying, you are my friend, and you was Mayor Frank, and you're Mayor Frank Jackson's friend. So it was a sixteen year period with Mayor Frank Jackson. We could have started hitting things like that, because then I don't have to go to Mayor Bibb. I could have went straight to Mayor Frank Jackson, and he, you would have asked Frank Jackson, Mayor Frank, because you was with us when we started developing this. You in the back rooms, uh, uh, Minister Roland Mohammed, you there. So if, I hope, I know it's back history, but if you had to hit it with Frank for them sixteen years, and then you got me to legislate it, you further down the road. But you skipped Mayor Frank Jackson, you said Mayor, uh, 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 former Mayor, yep, Mike White, and then you went to Mayor Bibb. If we had to hit it then, I'm, I'm at home, tell him, even mention it at home, I said, man, he said he hit it when Frank was there, because you know I was gonna say yes.
After you, I thought you.
Yeah.
What I was doing was incubating, and at the time of Mayor Frank Jackson, that, that thought and that idea was never on my mind.
But you mentioned.
So my point is that, I, how can I miss him when I never had the thought idea?
But you mentioned it.
Then the next thing is that if you all following in the same footsteps and the same path of one another, whether my idea came with Frank Jackson or Mayor Jackson, I came with you or Bibb, you understand?
Will.
You ought to should have been in tune and step, oh, I'm laying you, carry your life, brother, I'm willing to help you, come on, I help you. It doesn't mean that my idea, because I had this tight relationship with Frank Jackson, that Frank Jackson, I did go to Frank Jackson.
Frank said his hands was tied.
No, no, he didn't say his hand was tied, he was out of office.
It could have worked with Frank in that, man, that would have helped me out.
And he direct me what I need to do.
It would have been beautiful, I'm just saying, it's, it's gonna be harder.
They were sharing dilemma. She told me about the best thing to do, if I wanted to do something, set up a CDC. And then they, Westbrook came behind that and seconded that. Said, Minister, they got seven CDCs on the west side, that's why they so successful. On the east side, all these wars, you understand, turned this over to the Rico Foundation. And as a result of that, you're saying, they have control, they do what they want to do. And most people complain about the Rico Foundation, and then also this area right here, a non-service area by a CDC. You did start the Garrett, uh.
Garrett Square, Garrett Square.
The government corporation, and then you had a marvelous idea, but that fell through, so now I come in to fill the gap. You said, man, try to do the same thing.
And we gonna do it.
And so therefore, you understand, the question is, does not judge me by the past, to judge me by what I'm doing at the moment.
Huh. No, but, but, but here's the thing, I took you into Tessa Jackson, I walked you in, just like I walked in.
But I told you the mayor fired you.
I'm agreeing with you, I'm agreeing with you, Roland, but here's the thing, I walked in that same day, Bridget Grant, and they getting break ground, Respite Center, I walked in, Henry Butler, same time, with Tessa, mayor fired them, but they let me know, I'm just saying, you gotta talk with me and say, Kev, she's gone, I can't reach her anymore, I need your help to help me out. You got to communication, because communication goes both ways, it goes both ways, and like you mentioned.
Is that the biggest impediment to progress? Because I hear you say that a lot.
Yeah, you gotta communicate.
People not coming to the meetings.
You gotta communicate.
So that's what.
Here's some people don't.
Yeah, you gotta communicate, because I don't read minds, I know that they're executing and they're moving forward. And there's another brother over there on, uh, that, and I told him, he lost money, Mayor Clark, his money back. On, um, with the Stephanie Howe project, we were gonna do, Mike Bowen, and he didn't communicate, and Mayor, because you gotta do progress reviews, it's called progress reviews. And with the progress reviews, you're communicating, you telling me what milestones, what risks happened, it's the soil right, that you mitigate, is, uh, 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 Tessa Jackson returning, your phone calls, all that, and they was going through all those things, you know, but, um, we just move forward.
Do you see a project manager?
You need a project manager, yeah.
Do you see that, like, resolving some of those issues?
Yeah, yeah, Will could do it, because he's gonna write down.
So that's what you encourage to people like CDCs and stuff like that, that's looking to work with you?
Right, right, right. He's gonna write down, it's gonna be written down, and he'll show you, and it's very technical, and he'll take you through the phases that you have to go through for a project, and that's where banks and other people, who's gonna come in and help, they're gonna look at the, uh, at your specs and your scope. So Will, Will down at Economic Development is the person to talk with, and he'll do that part. Yeah, I'll introduce you to him again, no, I gotta set up a meeting with, because this is bigger, I just can't walk, I could walk you in, but just like I just said with Dennis, I set a meeting up with that as well, you know.
Where, where are you at in your recovery right now?
I'm doing good, man, I'm doing good. I, um, I work out every day, I go and work out every day, you know, lift weights and, and do my recovery, so I'm, you know.
Kev, you were still out here walking the ward, man.
I know, I know, I have too.
What did your family, man, that had to been tough on your family, man, your diagnosis, and then you still having the perseverance and the wherewithal to, to stay in your position?
If I'd have had that, I was looking to be higher than, uh, than councilman. You know, and when Bud, when you guys helped put me in, you know, I was looking to be higher than that, man, I was probably do mayor, then, then you do the senator, and that kind of stuff, because I've written a lot, a lot of policy.
You still got those same aspirations?
Um, I probably will, I'll probably go teach at a college, um, in the long run, go teach at a college and, um, and do that, play my read and write music, please teach at a college. But the thing is, it's, it's the stress that you don't want that bring things back. And so I eat right, I work out every day, you know, and do that kind of stuff, that's important, so you do.
How do you, how do you fluster, yeah, Kevin's got your police pulling you all over, over in your ward?
No, you, because you helped me with, like I said earlier, the battle against McGinty about the mayor rice, and then you helped me battle against, uh, uh, Judge John O'Donnell for black folks. You and Bud and Roland, Minister Roland Mohammed was always there when we were doing that, even when I was doing the fatherhood initiative.
Yeah, you got a question, you got another question.
It was a different thing.
Yes, sir, Mr. Council. Uh, like I was saying, you know, it's kind of Renaissance, we just talking, we trying to make things happen. Also with our women, I know you talk a lot about the women. We have self-defense class where we teaching the women how to, you know what I'm saying? Because they need to know it, because some of the men in the community is crazy as hell. And then they don't have a man in the house, and if they, if their man is not at home, how they gonna protect theirself, protect their children?
You shouldn't have a shoe, box, all that, yeah.
We teaching women self-defense, so if she ain't got no man, she ain't got the weight on the police, and when the police come, he be already took her. You see what I'm saying? So it's important that we got to recognize what Superior Renaissance doing. We doing positive things in the community. Like I say, we teaching the women self-defense, you know, uh.
Where the classes at? Yeah, he ain't lying, uh, here. I attended one of his classes la, a couple of weeks ago, yeah.
Plus the military training, you know what I'm saying? So, like I said, it's important, you know, because if you run up on one of the women at Superior Renaissance. So it's important.
That's important.
Want your wife to make it home, everybody in here want their wives to make it home, or their daughters.
That's important.
Because rape is on the all-time high, they kidnapping women, they putting women on the street, and we ain't going for it in Superior Renaissance, that's why it's important, we need some backing. Superior Renaissance need help, but if nobody help us, God is sufficient. And I know you say you was a whore, and I know, brother, you believe in the one God.
Not worse, is.
You see what I'm saying? Oh, where you are, excuse the language, you are a whore, Islam. So you a whore, brother, so that's why I'm saying it's important, brother, let's back each other help, because we gonna help you help us, brother. And Superior Renaissance, because we gonna make things happen. We ain't gonna just talk about it, like I said, Master Roland got a track record, and the name Islam got a track record, everybody know. They come up to that brother, talk to the brother today, ask us questions, man, what y'all gonna do, man? Because the violence is on the all-time high, and you waiting up for the police, sometime the police so scared, they ain't gonna come to the community, tell us down.
I know, I know, I know, that is true, that is true. That is true.
You know?
You know.
Or people is being raped, or kidnapped, or put on the street. That's why it's important, and we, we want our youth to see that their mother can protect theyself, so when they look at Superior Renaissance, they looking at Superior Renaissance, but they seeing real men, you know what I'm saying? The man is the highest form of intelligence of our creation, he's in the image and likeness of God, you know what I'm saying? He's not a male, he's a man, you know what I'm saying, and a man gonna make things happen. And that's why we need you, because we know you making things happen, so you need to help us make things happen.
Mo.
Kev, Kev. You know what, you know what about that, um, the crime thing, a lot of time our residents, instead of calling the police, and we don't have enough police officers, we're down several hundred police officers, the residents would call me, the councilman, and then I'll tell Imani, my assistant, to call, uh, the, uh, the commander, and then I end up riding with the police. Or the police would tell if an issue going down, to call the councilman. And that has resulted, my house been shot over, you know, before, I've had FBI on my front porch, I've had SWAT on my front porch, because they'll, they'll say, well, councilman, you could be looked out for more than me. And I'm like, alright, ma'am, alright, then we'll go out there, but then the drug dealers would tell you, I'll get you too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'll get you too, so if you look up Councilman Conwell, strange, they'll, they'll come at you too, they don't care nothing about that. So we need the sisters, they have self-defense to your point also, as well as the kids going to and from school. That's important, it's very important.
We know how to convince the Roland, know how to talk to people and myself, because and a lot of these brothers, we come up out of the ghetto. We knows a lot of these guys in here, we gotta communicate with them.
Three tough.
You know, we don't go trying to be tough, we show our brothers love. You know what I'm saying, and talk to the brother, try to stir him on the right path. We don't go to him talking tough, or we gonna do this, or crack your head, but if we got to a soldier, ain't no punk, we ain't no punk.
None of them.
Superior Renaissance, we men, but we try to talk to the brother, you know what I'm saying, and rationalize with the brother. But anything on there three hundred and sixty degrees is danger zone, we will tag his behind.
Yeah. Well, I remember when you got, I remember when y'all went down to King Kennedy, I remember that, isn't that right, Minister? I remember y'all was down to King Kennedy in the nineties, man, and when the crack epidemic was high, but they wouldn't let no one in, except the Muslims.
Yeah, that, that's.
Even, even the police.
That's when Mike White was coming through like lean on me and throwing us up against the bricks.
Yeah!
I remember them days, I remember them days down the way. Now, Kevin, you know, for, for, what, what can people do to, to bend your ear into a listening ear? As being a government official, as being the face of government, and somebody, people can actually reach out and touch to, touch. What is your advice for people seeking to get things done in this community?
Well, you know, I sit and talk with you guys about the Renaissance, and I looked at your proposal, you know, I mean, that helps out a lot. Um, meet me when I, uh, you know, when I, I walk the neighborhood a lot, as you know, you mentioned earlier, and you sit back. How do you write policy? It's by listening to people when they tell you certain things. Right, so then when you go downtown, you know, like I said, I have three national awards for writing a policy. It's not just my ideas, you learn it from, like, we're in a room right now, and you listen to people. Like, you mentioned the Renaissance piece, that's not my idea. I sit back, you listen to Roland, you write it, you work with, um, people, then out of that comes your awards, because that's your job also. It's to listen, and you do it through policy. When you look at the Civil Rights Act, that came from listening to people, look, look at the Voting Rights Act, it's come from listening to people, and that's what you write policy from, from that, so by answering your question, it's by me walking the streets, listening to people and those kind of things. So I, I sit back and I listen.
Right now, I know you gotta go, Kev, right now, you know, leave us with something we can hang our hat on, you know, um, you know, help us get comfortable with, you know, surrounding Kevin.
You know what, like, I came down here with respect.
Appreciate that.
You know what I respect a lot also? I know of your work in the neighborhood. We've been doing it for decades, well, not too many decades, we. But with Bud and I.
That's right.
We were doing things for decades in the neighborhood.
That's right.
And the same thing with Roland, I mentioned that people didn't even know that he was down in King Kennedy, and it was getting those guys together down there. Those kind of things that we need to do, um, in the community, and that also, that gives everybody respect. And even like when you mentioned Little Italy, the Italian Brotherhood. They, they have fifty Buds and fifty Rollins in Little Italy, men out there working, you know, giving back to the community, so that helps out a lot. Ideas are important, they're important, but it's the application of the knowledge that you're actually doing, and you going back and you see receipts of people that's been working in the community. That means a lot to me, it's the outcome measures of, of working, you know, and that's a lot, because I met you walking in the neighborhood, I met Bud walking in the neighborhood, and Roland, and we were working in the community. That gets people ear, it's mainly about working and doing. Outcome measures. The outcome measures.
Hey, I want to thank you, man, I want to congratulate you on your health, man.
Thank you very, very much.
Looking good, looking sharp, man.
Thank you, we doing that, that's important.
Appreciate you for coming down, man.
That's important, that's important. You know, um, people have to take care of their health, you have to, um, eat to live, not live to eat. You have to eat the right stuff, because it's not just about you, it's about, you, we talked about fathers, fathers and families together. It's about your family also, your family want to see you. And if you eat the wrong foods, and you end up prematurely dying, you hurting your wife, your children, your community, and that takes away from other things. So as I said again at closing, so with my health, I choose to eat right, exercise, and do all those things, it's very, very important. Thank you, and God bless.
Play it T, that's me, Hollywood in the hood.